I want to call off the closed meeting session, seconded by Consulor Cardarelli. Seconded. Mr. Lallon, any announcements? Mr. Simard, maybe the St. Pascual Golf Tournament this weekend?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Optimus Club Golf Tournament is being hosted, is being held this weekend. There are a few places, there are a few places still open if people want to take part in that activity. Thank you, Mr. Lallon. Yes. This Friday, a golf tournament hosted by the mayor. There's the Broken Sticks also golf tournament in Hammond from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And there's an opening of a brewery from 5:00 to 8:00. I'm going to try and attend, especially it's around supper time, so the invitation is open. The beer is offered at $4.50 for opening, the official opening night of that particular brewery. Mr. Bouchard, Perkleving hosted activities this weekend. So I'll be in attendance and we're looking to obtain the gold medal. It's a family event. Mr. Cardarelli, Mr. Zant? Fine then. As was mentioned, I'm hosting the golf tournament this coming Friday. Everyone's invited. We're now at question period, if anyone has any questions, step ahead. My name is Arala Labonté. I'm wondering if you have the answer to the question I asked two weeks ago. What's your address, Mr. Labonté? 1537 Chamepredam, but I represent my daughter on Chamepredam Road. So I'm wondering if you have any answer. We have no answer for you, so I'll never have an answer from you. Look, we explained to you how the system works. If you don't want to work alongside the lines set out by the system and what needs to be done, Mr. and Mrs. Willeth explained to you how things were done. All you had to do was to follow the steps we outlined to you. Well, did you consult insurance, the insurance people? When you hired all the contractors and set foot on that property? And when you paid that gentleman to issue a report? Did you contact all the insurance companies involved? No, taxpayer money pay for this? The septic tank system did not work and we had problems with the, with the well, this particular spring. Well, why didn't you put in apartments there? Well, we offered to go half and half with the well, but the damage on the property as well as the drain and the trees on the property, you refused to do anything. Well, I know that our lawyer sent you a letter, Mr. Labonté. We explained to you what's what. Well, if your lawyer wants to do something, he should consult with those who caused damage on the property, on my daughter's property. We showed you the photographs before the damages caused, before all the trees were cut and after. Fine, well, your lawyer does not do anything for local taxpayers or for individual taxpayers? You need to hire a lawyer for that. So you need lawyers, a lawyer to pay another lawyer, so they... That's how I got robbed in Eau de la Teneur. So we're talking about blank checks written to lawyers? That, that's why I was dragged in court, eh? Didn't you ask me to pay for my permit? You phoned me up to pay for my permit then, but my daughter won't pay for her permit. My daughter will not be called upon to pay for her permit. There are thieves and there are liars, liars. People hire professionals. If the work was done properly, why did they hire professionals? It was properly done. No, sir, you saw the damage caused on my daughter's property. Do you only work for lawyers or for taxpayers? I work for taxpayers, sir. Why do I need to consult a lawyer then? I can't consult members of my council? I can't explain things here. Mrs. Willeth explained to you everything. Mrs. Willeth said that she was going to be at the office the next day. I went there and she wasn't there. It's the same rule applies when you asked me to get onto the land the next day. You were there, but all of the others were not there. Same rule applies to Mrs. Simard, who told me to get there and the others were there, but she was not there. There's always someone not showing up. And when I asked you to show up at Town Hall, you didn't show up at Town Hall. No, I didn't bother to show up to consult the law, the engineer, because the engineer does not control this. You asked, you're controlling the whole, the whole system here. You didn't even give me a call. You didn't even consult my daughter to send the contractor there and you did the work that needed to be done when I went off on holidays. Sir, I'm not aware of when you were off on holidays. I'm not aware of your personal schedule. Well, I have no problem appearing in court. If your lawyer wants me to appear in court, I will do so. We'll see each other there, but I just want to know where our tax money is going. Your daughter's taxes, you mean? Well, we're not talking about taxes here. They're not my taxes, no, but my daughter's taxes. Well, at least we're in agreement on something, right? Right, but when the lady that phoned me the next day at the office, she was talking to me about the insurance people. I don't want to consult with the insurance people because they're not the ones that caused the damage and taxpayers should not be called upon to pay for damages caused on my property. I wanted to work with the people concerned and the insurance people. The insurance people have a specialist taking care of that? That's why we sent over the insurance people to take care of that. Well, same thing as this gentleman, who we sent those specialists to do work that was done on the ditch. Well, he did the work properly, that's right. He hired professionals to do so, to work on a ditch that was properly done. That's what he stated. How much money is he taking to perform work on something that was previously already well done? To redo something? When that gentleman released the report, he had no idea of what needed to be done. It's like the plan that you issued to me. There's not even any easement that's registered on that plan. There's, there are no properties that are delineated on that plan. You're having me run right and left to lose my time to look at things, look at details that don't even concern this matter. You're doing the same thing. It's the same, it's the same story, time in and time out. I don't have any answer. I don't get any answers. This gentleman states that to protect taxpayers, they hold back 10% or he holds back 10%. I was in the contracting business and I worked for contractors that worked for the government. That's why I saw how things worked. The first time that I was in business, I didn't bother with any of that. You know, if you're bidding for a job, there's, there's always a 10% holdback. Well, just send us a lawyer's letter. I won't send you a letter, sir. I'll be in attendance each and every time to address Town Council. It's your choice. Mr. Seto, your name and your address. Mr. Seto? Thank you, sir, thank you. Thank you, sir. Firstly, I'd like to thank the City of Clarestown-Rockland for having paved Victoria Street and thank you very much, Mattio, who worked hard with his pencil. And I'm just wondering why they want to build one-way streets throughout Rockland? I noted that the Victoria Street area was included in that. Well, I believe that a part of that road was a bit too narrow, but this study was commissioned and was submitted to us by Mr. Leonard. Well, the street at the corner of Victoria and Saint-Jean is only 18 feet wide. It's not all that wide, you know, for two vehicles to meet all at once. Well, it's still, we're still in the early preliminary phases. Well, I wrote a petition through Victoria Street, those 35 property holders, and that was calling for a one-way, again, that was calling for, for opposition against the one-way street. Well, thank you for working on behalf of the municipality, not against the municipality. That's quite well appreciated. I'm not, I'm not a savage, Mr. Mayor, let me tell you. I like to be proper and respectful, Town Council. Fine, well, well, let's just wait and see what needs, what will be done, fine. Last week, there was a gentleman with a wheel-type device that was measuring the road. A lot of people go up that hill and when you get to the top of the hill, you don't see anything. There are no sidewalks there. A lot of youngsters there are walking along the street or traveling along that street on bicycles. There are many streets that are not all that wide, so we'll take a look at that. Well, good evening, one and all. Thank you for your response, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it very much, I do anyways. Let's go on now to item 9.1, resolution processed by myself to support the township of Warhamwick regarding safety on family farms. Be it resolved that council supports the township of Warhamwick resolution dated 17th of June 2019, requesting down Downey, works with his, with all other deputies to come up with a better way of applying actual law or better legislation to see, to ensure the farm, farmers of Ontario as well as members of their families, to ensure the well-being of farmers and there were members of their families here in Ontario. Seconded by Consulor Simard, thank you. 9.2, Mr. Dizipal, Mr. Bouchard, be it resolved that we mandate staff to revise section 6 of Bye Law 207-, to consider allowing long watering from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. and from 7:00 to 8:30 or 9:00 a.m. All those in favor, carry? 9.3, members' resolution still be resolved that council mandates administration to revise Bye Law 2014-126, referring to meal expenditures by staff and members of City of Clarestown-Rockland to establish reimbursement criteria that are quite precise, that are pinpointed for, with regards to reimbursement of business meals. All those in favor, carry then. Item 9.4, Consulor Zant. Whereas City of Clarestown-Rockland is the owner of the Clarence Rockland Arena and whereas the Rockland Nationals Junior A Team asked the city in a letter dated January 19, 2018, to pay a third of the cost for the purchase of a hatch for the deep fryer mechanism and whereas council rejected that request during the deliberation of budgetary talks in 2019 and whereas the hatch was still installed or ventilation hatch was installed at the Clarence Rockland Arena and will remain there after the departure of the Rockland Junior A Hockey Team, be it, may they consider, may the council reconsider its decision and pay a third of the costs, being an amount of $13,000 and paid out to the Rockland Junior A Hockey Team. Seconded by Consulor Bouchard, questions? Well, Mr. Mayor, of course, they rented the premises. They didn't rent the restaurant. They do what they wish to do with the premises. They don't run the restaurant. They're, the owners is upon them to do what needs to be done. Well, I'm against that principle for the work to be done behind their back before it's, it being commissioned openly so that it may be done. If you'll allow me, the owners of the arena is the city, but the managers, well, it's incumbent upon the managers to take a decision as to that. The C I H takes a decision or should? Yes, that's right. The services did not have that on its budget, did not, budget for this. Well, they have the right to do so though. No, no, I'm not saying the opposite. The fact that they performed the work and then asked us to pay for it without consulting us, where there was a lack of communication, I understand that, but at the end of the year, sir. But at the end of it, the owner owns, the owner is still the City of Clarestown-Rockland and it cost us much less to pay for this than if we had done the work ourselves. All those in favor, all those opposed? Motion is defeated. Item 9.5, Consulor Zant. Yeah, my work doesn't, my computer doesn't work as it should. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Ah, give me a moment, I'll pinpoint that resolution that deals with community improvement, I believe. I can, I can certainly give you my documents here. Whereas the Rockland Family Car pratic and Wellness Center was situated at the 78 Laurier Street Plaza. Whereas prior to the move to that address, owners would, were led to believe that it would qualify for financing or for grants under the Community Improvement Plan, having moved at this new address and whereas their request was rejected because of the fact that their new installations was not located within the central zone that's admitted for grants and whereas council can revise or alter this part, subject to financing and aims of the council with regards to that part through a formal amendment process. Be it resolved that council asks administration to come up with a formal amendment to the Community Improvement Plan to enhance the scope of the Community Improvement Plan to modify the criteria under which the park is subjected with a view of approving the requests submitted by the Clarence Rockland Car pratic Center. There's no problem, sir. I spoke with Mr. Dijabne and I asked him to reapply with the new projects, if there are any other projects in the work, works. Who did you speak to? Mr. Guillaume Dijabne, the one who owns the building and he'll look into, we'll look into that and if we can come up with a new application, it will, it'll, it'll save us the trouble of going through all of this. One cannot say that then that this is an application that was forwarded after the work had been done, prior to consultation. All those in favor then? Yeah, so Mr. Grimah seconded this resolution. All those in favor, carry then. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Cardarelli wished to make a point. The motion, as it stands, does not mention any expenditures involved. Does that make a difference? Well, we'll see first what needs to be done and we'll perform, we'll apply changes. Are we waiting for changes to be applied? The resolution mandates Town Administration to prepare an amendment. It will be brought back to you for final approval. I see, I just wanted to make sure that this will be done. Of course, if the owners submit a new application, they'll have to come with a new application then? Well, the owner of the building knows how the system works. Well, I don't know the procedures involved, but they did not do this like the last time around. It seems that there were some projects that had not yet been considered under the new Community Improvement Plan and this one will be resubmitted, I believe. So the resolution states that it shall mandate Town Administration to prepare an amendment to modify the zone per se and the criteria with regards to that impacted zone to allow a project of that type to be subject to grants. I see, fine then. All those in favor? Carry, thank you, folks. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any items that you'd like to withdraw from the list of consent items? Mr. Levert, it seems that this is a perfect item for you to read. Be it resolved that these consent items be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A, minutes of the regular meeting of September the 4th, 2019. Committee of the whole minutes, September 4th, 2019. Receipt of the minutes of the following meetings, planning committee, August the 8th, 2019. 10.3, resolution to recognize the Great North Wrestling Event as an event of municipal significance. 10.4, resolution to hire a certified childhood educator for the daycare services. 10.5, resolution to adopt the tax reductions under sections 357, 358 of the Municipal Act. 10.6, resolution to adopt the salaries paid from July the 28th, 2019 to August the 24th, 2019 in the gross amount of $871,303.14 and a net amount of $622,459.59. Seconded by Consulor Zant, all those in favor? Thank you then. Committee, staff, 11.1. Accounts paid, Consulor Cardarelli. Be it resolved that accounts payable for the period of the 12th of August to the 8th of September 2019 in the amount of $5,494,216.36 be adopted as recommended. Seconded by Consulor Grimah. Any questions? All those in favor then? Carry. 11.2, Mr. Bouchard. Yes, Mr. Mayor, whereas the 2019 Ottawa River Festival incurred a deficit of $15,582.38 and whereas the community services are asking a transfer from the Ottawa River Festival Reserve in order to balance the operational budget and whereas the community services are asking $35,000 for the organization of activities for the 2020 Ottawa River Festival and Canada Day during the 2020 budget process, be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approves a transfer of $15,582.38 from the festival reserve fund in order to balance the operational budget and be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approves the municipal share allocated to the organization of the 2020 edition of the Ottawa River Festival and that it be paid at $35,000 plus employee overtime cost of $18,258 from the 2020 budget as recommended. Seconded by Consulor Simard, any questions? I would like that we reconsider this before saying yes immediately to the amount. Are we saying yes to this immediately? For example, if they come up with activities that are going to cost us a bit more, are we going to increase the City of Clarestown-Rockland's share or not? If we commit immediately to this? Well, see, the money has been approved for 2020 already, Mr. Boucher. The same principle applies as last year. We're talking about the same amount. We don't foresee going over and above the budget limit that was imposed upon us. It's easier for us then to put a hold on performers now as opposed to the last minute next year. It's easier for us to reserve artists now than before, than waiting at the last minute. 11.3, Mr. Simard, loan application. Be it resolved, Mr. Mayor, that Bye Law number 2019-96 being a Bye Law to submit a loan application upon amortizing debentures in the principal amount of $3,441,349.10 toward the cost of various capital projects be adopted. Seconded by? Consulor Levert, any questions? If we can just clean up application online, there are a lot of typos as to what was submitted. I'm not sure if, there's very little things that are written, but there are many mistakes. I just want to make sure that what we submit to the government will be proper. So maybe revise the mistakes, grammatical or otherwise, fine, fine, we'll do so, fine. All right then. All those in favor? I just lost my train of thought here. I just hate working on, with computers at times, just get lost in the... Let's go on now to additional funds for the Lakeview Road culvert replacement. Whereas Lakeview Road was closed earlier this spring in the month of April under emergency circumstances due to the risk of a road failure caused by culvert blockage, blockage should I say. And whereas at the May 10th, 2019 council meeting, an amount of $300,000 has been allocated to the Lakeview Road culvert replacement project. Be it resolved that council accept to increase the Lakeview Road culvert replacement budget from $300,000 to $425,000 and be it resolved that Bye Law number 2019-99 being a Bye Law to allow that the additional funds of $125,000 be taken from the roads reserve funds. Seconded by? I'll second, if you want. Considered with the estimate concerning emergency services or emergency situations. We're talking about 30% worth of extras. When we prepared plans and specifications, did we go to tender on this? No, it was an emergency situation. We based ourselves on similar type projects elsewhere in other municipalities and we determined that culverts had been the root of the problem in this particular instance. That was the best estimate that we could come up with at that time. Mr. Mayor, how much money is left to us in the roads reserve fund after this amount has been subtracted? Approximately $105,000 as the report bears out. That's after we have spent that particular amount. We're talking about a big culvert here, are we not? Well, aren't co-construction also has other contracts ongoing with us that have not, have been completely honored or have not been started upon? Well, we have a revision process with these good, with these folks. As things are, as things stand, they're working hard to replace culverts or working hard to replace parts of our aqueduct system and they'll be ordering materials in the coming days and months. Did they also perform any type of work on Longtree Street and its culvert there? I believe so, yes. I just want to make sure that everything is overdone with before the end of the year. Well, I believe we should talk to Mr. Campu about this. Let's not forget that, you know, they're giving us a very good price for the work that's being done. I understand that, but if they can't complete the work in a timely fashion or on time, fine, fine. Yes, we're just following up on what they're doing. As Mr. Campu has stated, once they're finishing work, where they need to complete that work, they're, we're looking into that and we'll be looking at all projects they're involved in. All contracts also include a final day clause, if you wish, at which the work needs to be performed or a deadline, if you wish. Well, they came across work that needed to be done, performed on sidewalks that had been built way back in 1919 that needed to be refitted and revamped, Consulor. Could you please make me aware of the date so that I could make residents of that ward aware of what's being done and when it will be done? No problem, I, we contacted the residents impacted on two occasions in the past and we'll continue keeping them aware of what's going on. All those in favor, carry then, thank you. Committees, fine, bye laws, let's go on to bye laws. Consent items, are there any bye laws you'd like to withdraw? The list of bye laws before us, Consulor Zant, could you please read those bye laws, the list of bye laws? Followed by should be adopted, 2019-86, Le Page Municipal Drain. Item 12.2, Bye Law 2019-87, Bye Law dealing with the Schnup Municipal Drain. Item 12, that's the ward I was involved in. Yes, item 12.3, Bye Law 2019-88, the Louis LaFleur Municipal Drain. Item 12.4, Bye Law 2019-89, the North Indian Municipal Drain. Item 12.5, Bye Law 2019-90, Paul Seguin Municipal Drain. Item 12.6, Bye Law 2019-91, the Roseon Seguin East Municipal Drain. Item 12.7, 2019-92, Raymond Vinette Municipal Drain. Item 12.8, Bye Law 2019-93, the Roseon Seguin West Municipal Drain. Item 12.9, Bye Law 2019-94, to authorize the clerk to perform civil marriages. And item 12.10, Bye Law 2019-98- And item twelve point ten, bylaw two thousand nineteen dash ninety-eight, amendment to user fee bylaw. Seconded by Councillor Simard, all those in favor? Carried, fine then. Confirmatory bylaw, be it deemed that bylaw two thousand nineteen dash ninety-five be the confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council held on the sixteenth of September, two thousand and nineteen. Seconded by Councillor Carderelli, all those in favor? Thank you. Arrangement called at seven forty-two P M. We'll see each other at eight P M for the next meeting, thank you.